Welcome all to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for those that have joined us online. As always, just to remind everybody, obviously this meeting is part of the meeting. So and also will be available online to view. So apologies first of all, so apologies from Finn Mear.
Yeah.
As the CFO and from Kate from Audit Wales.
Yes, and also Assistant Chief Fire Officer.
Fabulous. Okay, thank you very much. And then obviously we're joined online by colleagues, so thank you all. Okay, so any declarations of interest at all anybody wants to raise? No? Okay, thank you. I've got no announcements from me. Kirsty, was there anything you wanted to announce at all? No? Thank you.
Get a grip, will you? Come on.
Okay, thank you. So just first of all, a minute of the last two meetings then. So Board of Commissioners, first of all, we can start on page five of the pack. If we can just give them for, I know they were circulated already, but accuracy. First of all, any issues for page one and two? Three and four? Five and six? Seven and eight? No? So we'll happy to accept those, everybody? Yep, okay. And then Lady Wilcox, the Finance and Audit Committee, starts at page 15 of the pack. And again, if I can do page one and two for accuracy. Three and four? Five and six? Are we happy with that? Happy concept? Thank you very much again. And then just moving then on to outstanding action. So page 21, all items completely not on that one. Moving on to then page 22. We've got updates on market supplements, Alison.
Yes, Chair, so that we've got a report coming to the March Board of Commissioners on the retention aspect of market supplements. Yeah.
Yeah. And just to kind of add to your workload?
Yes.
Pay policy as well?
And the pay policy is also coming to the March Board of Commissioners.
Okay, and I think we've got a discussion around the March agenda, haven't we? Because it's pretty chunky.
It is pretty chunky.
But we'll do that at the end, okay? Thank you. So both of those will come through to March. Brilliant, thank you very much. Health and safety, comparative data, Forward Work Programme for Board of Commissioners. Have we decided when that's going to be yet, Gabby? Dean, can you remember when you were kind of volunteering?
Yeah, thanks Chair. So it was due for a paper in March and I should give you some midterm, mid-year comparative data. However, you know, it's open for debate whether you want that to sit in March, if it's a priority or if you'd like to push it forward post-March.
Okay, so we'll leave it on the March at the moment for a discussion at the end around what that agenda looks like and see what capacity is. Is that okay, Gabby? Okay. And then moving on to Quest additional support for Gremfell, that's coming to the Strategic Change and Transformation Culture Board. Dominic? I know it's probably a paper, but.
Yeah, so that will be brought forward for that board, yeah.
Okay, and that's in a couple of weeks, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, and I think Kirsty will chair that, aren't you? Eight thumbs up, thank you. And then the reporting template, new report template presented, EL Team February?
Yeah, it's ready. It's been presented tomorrow for approval.
And that's coming to us for the discussion, isn't it? Fabulous, okay. So I think we've got updates on the action or progress. Yes? Anything else that I've missed on actions?
Yeah.
Brilliant, thank you all, really appreciate this. Okay, moving on to the list of the agenda then. And the first one is Lisa for the capital and revenue budget.
Thank you very much, Chair. And so this report follows on from the consultation budget presented to Finance and Audit Commission on the 19th of December. This is a final budget setting report for 2005-6 and it covers off both revenue and capital requirements. So in terms of defining what our respective responsibilities are, as Treasurer, my responsibility is to provide financial plans and information that support the level of budget requests that we are making. And it is Commissioner's duty today to approve that budget bigger, the increase. So what we are looking at is a 5.75% increase to fire levies, which is an average across all 10 of our councils. Or alternatively, the way of looking at it is a 5.5 million pound increase. So following on from the 31st of December consultation report, I sent out a formal letter to all Chief Execs and Section 151 officers. I've had three formal responses, two are included as part of this pack and I've had one late response from Newport. So I'll arrange to get that response uploaded. So we've got all consultation responses on the internet just for transparency. So we had formal letters from Merthyr RCT and Newport. And there's some common themes there in terms of what they wanted to know. National insurance contributions was a theme. And they wanted to know about our efficiency programmes and our plans for managing the level of budget going forward. And also, two out of the three wanted a general suppression of the level of budget. I haven't seen anything that would make me reconsider that 5.75% position. And I'll take you through the reasoning of that through the detail of the report. So in addition to that formal consultation piece, I had many queries from finance professionals from councils talking about national insurance and the impact. We also undertook myself and the Chief, Dean and Brian, the two Assistant Chief Fire Officers, finance and service centred roadshows. They were offered out to all 10 councils. Eight took us up on that. So we have yet to meet with Newport and Vale. I'm not sure if that will happen, but I'll leave the invite open at a later date, even though the budget will be set. So moving on in terms of the context I said in this budget, we have a medium term financial strategy. Now, I haven't published that as part of the budget setting report because that does need updating and we are in a period of tremendous flex at this moment in time. So you need some hard and fast plans there to be able to inform what the efficiency to go into being the fallout in the medium term financial strategy. But what this tries to do, it takes historical and trend information and it presents how we look in terms of our funding picture in comparison to our funders. So the first table you will see there, it sets out both in green and red. Green is our council yield. And the way I calculated that is I look at the settlement from Welsh Government in conjunction with a council tax settlements. And you can see that in green. Pitted against that is us in red in terms of our fire levy budget. And you can see going back to 2009-10 that we've always come under in terms of what our funded settlement looks like. So the budget strategy in general is to track the settlements of our local authority funders. And that trend backs into 2022-23. And there is a reason for that. This was the year of the inflation crisis and it caught us really late in the year. So it was Christmas, New Year, when that caught up with us and we realised what the implications were going to be. So we set a budget in that year of 2.29. And you can see that very low red block there against the green. That was 5.4% lower than our local authority settlements because of course they set their budget much later in the year and they were able to capture those inflation increases there, which we weren't able to do. That had a consequent effect on the following year in 2003-4 and we did have a large increase there of 12.7. And that effect is both the catch up for the inflation. So we had two years' worth of inflation to catch up in that year's budget. Plus, there was some rerouting of grants from us to local authorities. So of course, the only way to passport that funding through to us is for us to include it in the fire levy. So you will see then, the last two years, 2003-4, 2004-5 are increased because of those reasons. Going forward, I think it's worth saying, the approach would still be to track, if not bet, our local authority funding settlements. So in terms of not looking at those financial years in isolation, the second but the second table there on page 29 looks at the cumulative effects and takes out the lumps and bumps of that annual funding. And you can see there that cumulatively since 2009, we have had less, much less funding than our funders. So we are coming in at around 37% increase since 2009-10 and they have had a 45% increase over the same period. If I move on to the local government settlement piece, this just revisits information that was contained within the consultation report before Christmas. And there is no update yet on what the final budget is going to look like for local government. So at the moment, it still looks like that average 4.3%. What's up for grabs for local authority at the minute is whether a funding flow will go in there to protect some of the lowest funders. People like Monmouth or, you know, entities such as Monmouth, they are looking at much lower than that 4.3 at 2.8%. So you know, there's winners and losers when we ask for our fire levy because you will have people going above and lots going below that average sort of baseline. And so that's what the settlement looks like from Welsh Government. I go on to talk about other pieces or streams coming into our councils, our funders, which is important because it's useful to know what their funding constraints are. And this moves on to council tax. And for last year, the increase in council tax I've set out there is averaging out between 4% to 5%. That's been a trend that's ongoing for a while now. Last year, that had an effect of adding 1% on to the overall budget settlement. So we could potentially be looking at a picture here where we've got an average 4.3%, plus 1% from council tax. And then that does not take into account then additional national insurance contribution funding that will be coming to councils within the first half of the new financial year. Now, the timing and the value of that is not yet defined. So that will probably or most likely come to us through a supplementary budget. But if I take our position as an example, national insurance contribution has had a 1.7% increase on our budget. So we would be looking to be setting our budget at 4.08 had the national insurance changes that were cited in the Autumn Budget not occurred. So if I take the 5.3% average local government settlement, 1% council tax increase, plus 1.7 national insurance increase, that takes then to a potential funding position of 7%. So if you set that against our ask of 5.75, looks achievable, doesn't it? And that takes into account some of the consultation responses that we are having in terms of they have more complex service requirements in terms of social services, adult care, children, education, that sort of thing. We acknowledge that and that acknowledgement is in that 1.25% funding differential. 2.6 paragraph, well, the paragraph 2.6, population change. This just tries to explain to Commissioners that changes in population will impact what that fire levy looks like for each individual council area because the distribution formula is based on a periodic basis. What I've done there is I've included a table that looks at the current year budget of 96 million using the updated population data. And you can see there, even if we ask for no budget increase, Cardiff and Newport would be paying more because it looks like everybody wants to live in Cardiff and Newport. Okay? What that red line there is doing is just setting the average between, setting apart the councils that sit below and above that 5.75% average. These budget considerations were included in the consultation budget. So I wouldn't revisit them. It set out what the process was for our budget setting and also the values that were either included or taken out. And there was a process of rationalisation and we did reduce for just under 3 million on our budget. When I came to Commissioners as part of our open dialogue on what this year could look like, if you recall, I mentioned 8.93%. So we've come down a long way since then. And of course, other things in terms of, you know, the Autumn Budget announcement and national insurance have had an impact on those figures in terms of they were up, they went down and they've travelled back up somewhat again. In terms of our budget planning considerations. So this is where we look for next year and more medium term after this. It talks about the use of reserves. So we are still required, as all local government organisations are, to set a balanced budget. And we have done that. Our budget is based on a business as usual model of delivery. So same staffing, same crewing, all the same models because those things at the moment are being subject to change through the CRMP process. We know that there are extras taking place. There are temporary structures in place, there are projects in play and the value of those things are being funded from reserves in the short term. We can see the effect that is having on this year's budget. So we've got the most recent update I've received this week is our revenue budget overspend is looking at 1.2%. Our budgetary spend is higher than that, but given there are things like vacancies offsetting that increase, it is 1.2%. And that is the cost of change and transformation. And that's what we are taking from reserves and we will not be passporting that through to our councils as an ask. That trend continues somewhat into next year and there is a lesser sort of projected overspend to be funded from reserves for that continuing to work, which I'm assuming finishes then. So on page 31, you've got the reserve position and that's doing a number of things for us. It's showing what we've got available. So as of 31st of March, that's about 16 million. And you can see that downward trajectory there. So what that's doing is it's funding the change in transformation I just spoke of in the revenue budget, but it's also accommodating investment in some of our longer term objectives. So it is things like sustainability. There's some money coming out of there that will fund the first net carbon zero station in Wales, which is set at New Inn. The green premium for that build is set at 700,000. 1.4 million has been earmarked in our reserves next year to support capital investment. And so it covers off sustainability, quality, diversity and inclusion and also firefighter welfare. So it will deal specifically with the growing issue of contaminants. So that's 1.4 million there. So even though that doesn't reduce the revenue budget, it does suppress it because if we are going to choose to fund investment in this way, it will mitigate the level of capital financing charges sitting in the revenue budget on a longer term basis. And I provide some detail there on table 32 and 33 as to what that looks like. Finishing off, we come to the end on page 33, Welsh Government Funding Announcement. This specifically relates to the local government provisional settlement and also national insurance. And this just talks about or addresses the concerns that are coming out through the roadshows and through the consultation, which is what's the effect of national insurance? I put a table there at 2.16, which talks about the effect for each individual council area. And also, and this is part of the report, it's asking Commissioners to give delegated responsibility to the Commissioner, to the Treasurer so that if funding for national insurance for any reason goes directly to us to fire as opposed to councils, for me to alter the levies on a dynamic basis going forward. Because it's likely that we won't know what that is until the financial year has started. On page 34 there, I've put potential repayments to councils should that occur because our funding position is based on the assumption, as in this for fire across Wales, that that funding is going through to councils and not coming through to us specifically. That is the indications we are having from Welsh Government. Moving on to the proposed budget there, there's a table in 2.18 and you can see more clearly the position we are in this year, the population impact and the increases for each individual area. The red line there is separating out those councils that fall above and below that average 5.75% settlement. And that brings me to the end of the report really with two recommendations that we approve the level of funding for next year and that you delegate authority for me to make adjustments to the fire levies should there be a change in the national insurance funding mechanism.
Thank you, Lisa. Comprehensive report and the overview really focused, right? So I will look to questions. I've got Lady Wilcox.
Chair, thank you very much. And firstly, I'd like to put on record my thanks to Lisa for this detailed report and in fact, all the work that she's done this year moving into the role permanently, the ups and downs of the staffing situation and people leaving. And, you know, she's had a lot to do. So, you know, that needs acknowledgement. Saying that, we've been in place for a year and while we passed the budget on the February 12th last year with very little information, we now have a year of running into what we're doing here. And although I'm the Commissioner ostensibly with the finance portfolio, that the four of us look at these things in detail and in discussion. And I know that my fellow Commissioners will have things to say. So what I will say is the points that came back from Rhondda Cunnantaf and Merthyr, you know, are without conjecture. We do need a medium term financial plan without a shadow of doubt. And we need to look at halting our projects. We did say in previous meetings that we were going to put a moratorium and I'm sure other Commissioners will correct me if I'm wrong, that we were going to put a moratorium on taking anything forward because, and I believe the quote was, contracts haven't been signed. So we need to tease this out in this meeting and come to a decision on that. I'm sure in terms of, you know, giving Lisa the green light to go ahead should things change with the national insurance contributions, that isn't a problem. That's a, you know, that's a nod in the right direction. But we are currently recruiting for a Treasurer. Lisa has taken on that role throughout this year, an extra role for her, which is again, has added to the, you know, incredible workload that she has. I just feel it's more than enough time for us to say the fire authority has to cut its coat according to its cloth. Local government has received disastrous cuts over the past decade. And the explanation that Lisa gave about that massive increase the year before last was perfectly justified. But, you know, we can't go on doing the same things that we, in the way we've done it. Engagement with local authorities have got to start a lot earlier. We've got to look at the ways in which we engage with them and we've got to look at building a resilience, but also understanding there's a limitation on funding for South Wales Fire. We are not, you know, in the happy position of being able to go back to constituent councils and ask for more money. We have to look at what we're doing. We have to look at what we're paying. And we have to look at whether it's good value for money for the public and for public service. Because the public service underlines absolutely everything that we do. We saw that yesterday with a magnificent response to St Athan Primary School, which I'm sure we'll talk about later. You know, we are a necessary part of the public service, but we can't do that without appropriate safeguards for funding, appropriate prudence. And again, you know, I thank Lisa for what she's done. But I do think this is a line in the sand now where we have to look at things differently going forward and see how we can fit in with what everyone else is doing.
Thank you, Lady Wilcox. So if I just pick up some of those points while others wants to. So medium term financial plan, Lisa, you mentioned. And Dominic, we've talked about the efficiency plan going forward. So medium term financial plan, is that a, we will have one 25 into 26?
We'll have to. I think what's got to happen is Chris has kicked off the CRMP, the Community Risk Management Plan. So the efficiency plan and the financial plan actually, that just accompanies that because there's going to be a lot of change and movement in resources and what that resource looks like. That will, the efficiency programme will fall out of that. That will inform then the medium term financial strategy. And we'll be able to say, now normally a medium term financial strategy has got a three year look. So that's what's been very difficult to do in this particular period is know what we're going to look like the year after next and after that. So I think that piece of work needs to start in a more substantive manner before that information can flow through. So I've already booked in meetings with directors and their heads of service to start collecting our data so we know what the starting position is and we can measure the value of efficiencies and also define what they look like. So the Chief has tasked me with the detail of compiling the efficiency programme and we will have one.
Okay, so there's an opportunity to go back to others to be very clear, both around appropriately take around efficiency going forward and the appropriate take around medium term financial plan and that they will, there'll be very clear that that will be delivered, which I think deals with a couple of Lady Wilcox's points, really valid points. Just talk about very quickly then the foreground vision around the CRMP. Time sales, Christian, because obviously that then answers an impact on the capital budget. Yeah. What do we need? Where do we need it? What does that infrastructure look like?
So give a quick snapshot now. We are meeting tomorrow, you'll have a brief on it. And the paper, formal paper for CRMP is coming to March for the Commissioners. We have kickstarted it. There is a financial investment into this because we want to take a position on taking a blank canvas approach. Take a blank canvas approach means we'll need proper data and understanding our data. So we put a halt on the procurement process for the dynamic cover tool. We've done that because we want to add in more parts of the process and go back up to procurement. So we've got a full package of the right software systems to be able to look at who we are, what we're made up on. So it's about the efficiency on what stations look like, what it looks like for risk reduction, both prevention and protection. But it'll also just have a really detailed look at are we positioned in the right place? And with that, what models do we put onto those stations? So it's a blank canvas approach. From the point of procurement and getting the system in, it's a 20 week timeline for that data to be put into place. And then it's, once you've got that data, it will be a case of round the table and making decisions on what moves can we make and in what time fields. So it's quite a quick process, 20 to 20 weeks, that's the data collection. Then the next part then is about your decision making, followed by engagement.
So 20 weeks on the back of where we are. Building on Lady Wilcox's point around capital programme, what are we doing around the current capital programme, Lisa? To understand what have we already committed to, this intrigue we can't stop? What kind of we might want to do and what we don't? Because I think, you know, that's Lady Wilcox's point, isn't it? How do we make good decisions? Appreciating where we are, where we are in the budget year as well.
Yeah, it's a good observation. And so Dean and myself sit on the Property Steering Group, which is an internal forum for crafting that meeting to longer term look at the property investment plan. An invite is going out to Christian because he's the lead on the CRMP, which is a significant factor in that piece of work. So I've asked the property team to categorise the current projects that we've got into, what must continue because we've signed contracts and we've got people out in temporary arrangements and something needs to be done about that. So what we have to do and what is falling into that question mark area, which could be answered by things like CRMP and also things like stock condition surveys and bits like unco-location requirements. And then we are going to have another category of, you think this is probably a no. And we do have some items falling in that category. And we're quite au fait with our portfolio. That's not to say we. And we, we quite affair with our portfolio. That's not to say we'd be complacent. But the thing is that we currently have as questionable, without that hard dataset, we've already paused.
So obviously the big one on the budget, obviously New In.
Yes.
Where does New In six, six million is a huge amount of money, isn't it really? And I certainly wouldn't want to be sitting here signing off the budget. If a, we, we, we could pause, should pause, or it's completely in the wrong place. And I know it's difficult when we look to the future.
I think as we've signed off all the contracts, pausing is going to cost us an awful lot of money at this moment in time. So we are committed to that construction piece at New In. I think it's to the east of the service, which is where we do need an asset. So my view is that that needs to continue.
Right. I'll bring in others kind of very, very well. Kind of dominate the conversation. Vich.
Yeah, thanks. A couple of points we've just covered. I think it's, it's right that the CRMP will inform the medium term financial plan. Because that, that just seems quite natural. But in terms of efficiencies, whilst some of that will flow out of a medium term financial plan and will also flow out of how we designate the CRMP. Efficiencies can still be running in parallel from right now, because there are lots of things that we can look at in terms of efficiencies. It doesn't necessarily need to fall out of the, the medium term financial plan. And when it comes to the, the capital, it's not just the capital, it's major spends that we were trying, I was trying to understand about. We did ask a question. So which projects have we got? When were the contracts signed or when are they due to be signed and what are the, what are the costings? And at the moment, I haven't seen any detail. I've heard that we've got these categories. We haven't seen a, a table, a spreadsheet that says the top 20 spends. This is where we are in terms of timings and why. It'd be useful to have that data to give the assurance around where we are in terms of those, where we are in terms of those positions vis a vis those contracts.
Thanks, Vich. You're very quiet. I think we got, got that.
Yeah. So, so the property steering group meets bi-monthly. So we'll be meeting in March to determine all those definitive pieces of information, Vich. And we'll work out when we're going to bring that back to commissioners. At this point, I would suggest is probably, you know, leave it with us, I guess. I don't know if that provides you any insurance. I mean, I, I have got the, you know, value for money head on. It's just crafting that information to push in front of you. But I, I see it more as a, a management piece. I think going forward.
Okay. Pause that thought. So Kirsty stroke Dean, I'm not sure who pressed the button.
I did, sorry. I, I just wonder then. Quite understandably, the discussions around in the property group are operational discussions and that is a matter for the service. I guess the question is then, what, where, where is the governance oversight for the discussions and the decisions that are being made in that group? So you're quite rightly said, you know, we have to let officers do the work that needs to be done within that group. I'm just wondering then, does that come up to the committee that Debbie chairs? Does that come back to board of commissioners? I think, what I think the commissioners are saying is we just want a little bit of oversight and a little bit of sense checking of some of that work. So, you know, we don't want to be at the property group. And nobody is doubting, you know, the professionalism of the people in that group to do the work. I just think for, for, for a governance perspective, where would we see the outputs of that work? Where do they feed into and where's the oversight? Thank you.
Thanks, Kirsty. That's really helpful. Lisa, if you pause, I'll bring Lady Wilcox in and then probably hopefully.
Thank you. Building entirely on what both Vich and Kirsty has just said. You know, so you know, the New In project, how do I know in governance terms that it's too late to stop? It may be, but I don't know that.
The contracts are signed, they were signed before Christmas, Lady Wilcox.
Okay. And how much would it cost to stop it? I don't know that.
Okay. So.
You see, it's governance. It's not, you know, I'm not throwing questions out of the air. I'm just trying to, you know, to, to give tangible examples. Of, of, we're here to govern and scrutinise, not to do operational stuff.
Thank you, Lady Wilcox. Dominic?
Yeah. So the, the next paper is on our governance model, which might address some of these areas. So the boards that Lisa is talking about sits underneath the governance structure in that model. And so the heads of the director level would bring those up into our performance planning meetings and then into your governance meetings. So, so that structure underneath sits underneath the director level. So they should get pulled through that way.
Thanks, Dominic. So if I can try to work through some, what I think of actions come out of that last conversation. And then we can move on to the recommendations, Lisa, around budgets. So I think there is an action around building on your point around that medium term financial plan, that we would want to see that. And we just need to kind of work through what the time scales for that. And I think some of it has to be driven by the CRMP. But I don't think it all leads to. So maybe there's two parts. So that, that action around that CRMP. And Gabby, we need to look back when that come back to governance.
Yeah.
The second one is around the efficiency programme. Yes, I agree. I think some of it's CRMP. But I think some of it, Dominic, goes more broader to what's the efficiency around the transformation programme, which is what we agreed on the away day. So that action around what the efficiency programme for the service looks forward. Because if we wait for CRMP to do it, we're going to be so late in the year, we're going to be back to budget planning and we're going to have the same conditions again, potentially without funds. So I think that efficiency one to support Lisa and the team and all. So I think it'd be really, really helpful, really. I think what we're asking for, I think what we're asking for as commissioners is that breakdown of those big projects, but, and it's not just property. It's, it's the big spend pieces that we've got ongoing or potentially ongoing at the moment, which probably doesn't all sit in your portfolio, Lisa. So there is that, what have we got that's in train already? So the work you were doing around the Cathy Estate Programme, I think you'd have seen. But I think what we're asking for on the back of Lady Wilcox, Kirsty and Vich is the same around the other big programmes and, and capital spends that we've got at the moment. And if we could have that through around the rationale, probably into finance committee, I would say, Lady Wilcox. And then up towards for governance, I think that would be the way to do that, to get that reassurance going forward. I think there is that specific question around New In, around what are the costs if we did decide to take another decision? And I think we, we, we just need to kind of to, to get that reassurance of what that would cost if we decided to break contract, pause contract. Recognising the impact will be significant because we've got staff that are not in New In at the moment. And also the bit about the gut feeling stroke operational knowledge of the organisation of would we need something there anyway? So I think there's a whole bit around that. We just need to kind of box off around that area going forward. And then the final bits then, I think are the two recommendations. So first of all, commissioners, everybody in the room, are we happy around those actions? Capture the discussion today and what we're asking for. I've got a thumbs up from two, a hand up from Lady Wilcox. I'm thinking that's good. So in that case then, can I move to the recommendations? I, I know we've kind of asked for clarity around New In and cost and issues, but around the revenue and capital budget. Are we firstly, A, I could sign that off at the moment. And what I would say around the capital budget, if we do decide to pause any of the programmes, there is a likely we are going to have to use capital to spend on other elements of CRMP. So we'll always use that money in another way anyway, even if it's not against defined capital spend that we've got. Because we know that there's going to be changes. So will we be comfortable to A, sign that budget, those budgets off? And B, the delegated authority for Lisa around national insurance. Lady Wilcox.
Yes, happy, happy to do both that. And I'd also like replies sent to Rhondda Cunnantaf, Merthyr and Newport. Because if they, if they've contacted us, I'd like to make sure we, we reply back to them.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, thank you very much, Lady Wilcox. Kirsty? Is that a yes for myself? And Vich? Yes? Okay. Have I missed, did I miss anything in that, in my chaotic view of the world, which sometimes? Sorry. Thank you. Well, I think going, going on Lady Wilcox's point around you and the team, I think it shows the importance of that finance team really and the challenges that you've had around resources. And that actually we need to stabilise that code of work. Because it is absolutely instrumental kind of all the work that we're going to be going forward really. And having that support for you and having that support for the services. But thank you for the paper and thank you for the explanation about what we've got there. Fabulous. And we didn't even talk about reserves. So, which Dominic keeps spending. Fabulous. Okay. Unless there's anything else on the finance paper, we'll move on to governance. Fabulous. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So this paper is to approve the draft governance framework. I'd like to start by thanking Wayne for pulling the paper together and the work that he's done on this so far. So the draft governance framework sets out our committee structures and how they feed into our governance structures. They're based on our ethical principles and the core code of ethics. And the paper talks around how we will make decisions and how that will feed through into that high level governance piece. The recommendation is that the commissioners review and approve South Wales Fire and Rescue Services draft governance framework, which is included in appendix one of the report. This framework has gone through SLT Performance and Planning under 7018, and been approved at that level. You'll see from the paper that it reviews our structures, starting with this board of commissioners and then the committees that feed into that. So finance and audit, the people committee, the pensions board and our new strategic change transformation and culture board, which covers our change broadly. Underneath that is the ELT Oversight and Social Partnership. And it covers three main boards. Those boards are SLT Performance and Planning, which will include risk performance management. And then the boards that Lisa mentioned earlier as an example would get fed into that from the director level. It includes a new service improvement board. Currently, we have a culture board, which covers our cultural transformation programme and a thematic board. Those are mirrored and essentially the views that they will become one board at some point. They will manage our change programmes moving forward. So any big ticket items would then be moved through that board as part of our yearly improvement plan. We've also included a culture and connections group that includes staff voice and trade union feedback. And it enables us to get their thoughts and perspectives on some of those change processes. Currently, we'll take things like change recommendations and improvement into that group for feedback and allows them to feed directly into ELT and raise any issues that they have in and around that area. So it does include trade unions, but it focuses on staff voice as well. So it includes our inclusive networks and other key areas to feed in more broadly at that piece. Underneath that, you have the departmental boards, which we've already mentioned. We also have the programme and project boards, which would feed into that directly and our staff networks. They also include a brief overview of our external scrutiny. Things such as our independent advisory group that we're developing that sit on top of that structure to give us some external advice. You'll see that the bottom of that report includes a breakdown of the key meetings that sit in that term to be developed for each one of those groups and will get approved at the relevant boards. And SLT's terms of reference was approved December the 18th that feeds into that. Also looked at how those boards are fed so that we can have a consistent approach to things such as papers and moving into the programme. So you refine that, you put those on your base in the business support process and working through how those all come through in a concise fashion. So the recommendation is that the commissioners create the draft governance framework moving forward.
Thank you, Dominic, and thank you, Wayne, for the work. Thoughts, questions from anybody? Kirsty? And then Vich.
Thank you, Carl, and thank you, Dominic and, and Wayne. So just some clarity then, and just to pick up the point I made in the last item. So the property group isn't, isn't explicitly mentioned in the document. Although property does, is mentioned in the document for falling under finance audit and finance audit committee. It would, so I'm just clarifying then that in the last item, the information would come at to on a regular basis, finance and audit. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So the director that that sits under would manage that through their groups and committees underneath. And then they would bring the paper for decision at the relevant level. So if it needs SLT approval, then they would bring it into the SLT planning and performance board. And then if it needs further scrutiny for the governance, it would move forward into those relevant boards.
So how does, so it's just the decision making around that, isn't it? Because as we're going to discuss later with the March Commissioners Board, you know, we could potentially swamp the Commissioners Board. I'm just wondering, how is that flow of information mediated, triaged? How do we make the decisions and who is making the decisions around which pieces of information make it out of the SLT? Or out of the executive leadership team into either the committee or the, or the board? Because we only kind of like know what we know, don't we? So I'm just wondering about what is the, what, what is the protocol for? And who, who is making the decisions of that flow of information, please?
Yeah. So in the, in the governance document, the scheme of delegation gives us the authority around who's eligible to make those decisions or not. So if it has financial implications, then the director would pick that up at SLT level and it would get moved into the commissioner's governance piece as an example.
And Lisa, you put your hand up. And obviously we've used the States, haven't we, really as an example, but it could, could for us.
So, so just to echo what Dominic was saying, our constitutional documents highlight who's got delegated authority to make what decisions? What, and, and to some extent, what information needs to come through to what committees, you know, in terms of statutory information, reports, things like that, circumstances also. And so if we add in permanent costs onto the budget base, things like that, that has to come through to commissioners. It must get treasurer's sign off beforehand. All that stuff is set out in our constitutional documents. So yeah, that, that's generally how we gear up what we take information into it.
But I suppose Kirsty, your point, and I suppose that comes down to actually how the meetings now start, isn't it? Or is that early agreement around expectations of what comes up and how, doesn't it really? And those conversations probably with both lead commissioners and members of the exec team probably to start day one of what do we expect type of stuff. Am I, am I reading too, too little or too much into that, Kirsty?
No, no, you've done it much better than me, Carl. So, you know, I know we've got the formal documents, but, but I think we're, we're speaking to a piece here above and beyond like the bare minimum. So we can look good by ticking the boxes on the bare minimum or we can do good by having, you know, as you said, those conversations and being clear about expectations around, you know, and that sense really from our senior leaders as to say, actually, you know, this is something that really, you know, the commissioners need to know about or I want the commissioners to know about. And, you know, so it's about doing good rather than just ticking the, the boxes and that, that, that professional decision making on behalf of the senior leaders of the organisation really.
Thank you, Kirsty. And I'll, I will bring you in, Vich. But Gabby's about to throw a pen at me and convert a Christian probably me in the ear. So if you could bear with us for two seconds.
And all I was going to say is just to kind of piggyback on what Lisa said. So the constitution will set out kind of the statutory papers where they need to go. But I've done a bit of work ready for the forward work programmes for next year to cancel in. So sort of departmental updates where they, which board and where they will come into for you, as well as the statutory obligations that we've got as a service, updates on those relevant boards. And then I suppose any other sort of I've had decisions that need to come through throughout the year. That will be sort of ELT level will work out at what point those need to come up to you and they will be fed into forward work programme as well.
Okay, Gabby, Christian?
I think Gabby's just highlighting what I was going to say is we need to have a, a programme. Because I, I know we look at March's meeting we've got coming up now and everything's going in, everything's going in the box. So I think we need to plan this out. And it is down to, yeah, the bare basics of statutory duty, but, or statutory responsibility. But we even also need to look at, yeah, what, what ELT need to bring through, what you need to know about. So I think there needs to be that real good forward programme for us.
Thank you, Kirsty. Vich and then Lady Wilcox.
Thanks. I think the final thing with this is there's a, there's a difference between what we get told and what we want to hear. I think there's, there's two parts to it. And I think that's about us as commissioners, setting the, when we come to set the agenda for the board of commissioners, influencing that debate as to the things we'd like to have on it. And that can be further defined by the forward work programme, that there are certain things that we think are important in the next. are certain things that we think are important in the next year that sit out with the normal departmental reporting cycle that we would want to have factored in. But my specific question was on page eleven of the document on Risk Management, where I know we've got an item on the ELT meeting tomorrow on Friday, which talks about risk. But when I look at the last sentence on that risk management section, it says, community risks are assessed in our annual improvement plan and considered by working groups in escalated way necessary. I think that will be superseded by CRMP. When we have a CRMP up and running, it will show that our current approach to risk and our future approach to risk are two different two different beasts. But I think that would we would we want to make reference in this document, Dominic? Because the reference is made to lots of other things which are current, but there's no reference made to CRMP, which is going to be a real driver for how business is done.
Thank you, Bee.
Yeah. So that so that there is a there is a current piece where this is setting out what we're doing now so that we can make sure that we're putting some of those things through. And we've already started a piece of work to look at the risks and how they get pulled through the SLT Planning and Performance piece. Wayne's took that away and started that. But there'll be a much bigger review around how we manage risks wholesale, so not just from the CRMP process, but how they all move through this document themselves. So as we develop that, that will that process will change and we'll turn that a little bit more. So I think that it's currently structured to what we are doing and what we're going to do in the interim space. And then we'll develop that approach. So not just the CRMP approach, which covers the bigger community risks and how we're going to address them, but organizational risk, departmental risk, the whole risk picture.
And speaking to the chief, I think he has got a, you know, risk background, hasn't he? And has a view around actually more broadly how risk could be looked at in a slightly different way than in the past.
Yeah. And he's prioritising that piece of work. So he's set some stuff afloat to look at those already. Wayne's going to bring our risks back in shortly to SLT to look at those and quality assure those that routinely go through the SLT Planning and Performance Board currently. But there'll be a much bigger piece that we look at on how we develop those from the CRMP to the top level all the way down. And of course, there'll be improvements that we pull out of our HMSE FRS inspection in that space as well about how risk weaves through our activities. So prevention, protection, response, and how we target that activity a little bit better. So it's quite a huge piece of work. That that process picks up the flow of information really rather than the broader piece.
Thanks, Dominic. Good job. Wayne's got broad shoulders. Thank you for that. Lady Wilcox?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, to a lot of the previous comments that have been covered. But, you know, while I wouldn't, you know, while I would never try to second guess what Welsh Government are doing, or indeed the original minister who put us in place, the main thrust was for us to come in and govern. And therefore governance and models of governance clearly needed to be changed. And this is part of that process. So what I want to know on the front page of the document or the summary, it says the framework will be reviewed periodically. I'm glad it's going to be promoted across the service. But, you know, how and when are these reviews going to take place? And what does periodically mean? Does it mean three months? Does it mean six months? Does it mean nine months? You know, because already issues have been drawn up about this in this discussion this morning, therefore this should be a living, working document with, you know, we need timescales as to when these reviews will take place. Is it working?
Thank you, Amy. Dominic, got a thought? Wayne? Or do you want to take that as action?
So we'll take.
On the comeback with the decision?
Yeah. So we'll take that as as an action. My view is that it will be a working document. And I think there is some some scope in there around, I view, for us to bring that back through this process in terms of execution developments. Why? We'd say that any key milestones such as risks, CRMP, would see us review this, but we'll also probably feel we're instructed if it ends.
Okay. So I think then actions, there is a formal action or come back to us around what that formal review process or timeline, we've got on the back of Lady Wilcox's comment. I think there is definitely an action both for ELT and commissioners that are chairing or sitting on the boards to engage around what papers, what types of issues we would want to see, building on Gabby, your work and building on the work of Wayne. So there's Wayne, the governance framework, Gabby, your work around the paper both for that element of we would also want to see. And I think if we do that at the start of those meetings, and we've got the Strategic Change and Transformation Board coming up, those conversations of what types of stuff is outside of that, we can have those conversations. So definitely actions around those elements if we're comfortable. And the final recommendation was, are we comfortable to sign off the governance framework as is at the moment in time? So can I have a yes or a no? I've got yeses. Fabulous. Thank you for the work, Wayne. Dominic, really good. And he's taken a lot of work to get to this point with numerous iterations and different colours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. And we're very aware that we've got colleagues dropping out in about five minutes. So I'm trying to use my hauling chairing skills to kind of move us on. So Lisa, carbon reduction plan?
Yes. And I keep this green. The carbon reduction, this record provides an update on the floating plan of the last three years. So it provides a round off of the last carbon reduction plan. And the next carbon reduction plan, which I believe Beth and has agreed with commissioners during the pre-meet, will be brought to March's Board of Commissioners meeting. I think that plan will go further. It's set to be more strategic and more coordinated now that we've got a permanent resource in place in terms of that sustainability officer. I think I'm looking at ways to potentially bolster that area of work because this is a really important area for the service. And we've struggled to gain traction on some of this stuff because of the limited resource that we've got in place. So we're trying to be imaginative as to how we can tackle this challenge going forward. So I'll come back to commissioners on that. And you'll see through the plan, there's sort of references, a number of the acts and what has happened in the last years period. And then it moves on to give in the carbon reduction footprint there, the calculation, which is submitted and agreed with Welsh Government. So you will see a slight improvement there, albeit not really where we want this to be. I think for make some real change, we need to get a number of strategies in place. And Beth has updated the actual plan found on page seventy three there. And I look forward to seeing the next plan.
Thank you, Lisa. I know this question because I've kind of spoken to commissioners. So Beech, I'll bring in you first.
Right. I will be able to stay for another half hour, Carl. I'll just work it out here back at the right side, definitely. Thanks for this work. We did discuss this at the pre-meet. I did when I spoke to Beth and I accept all what's in it. What I wanted to see was some some of the changes going forward. And I guess that hopefully that will come through in the March. Because I did some research on it about looking at Welsh Government don't require us to submit data on the amount of CO2 saved from reducing fires because Welsh Government are trying to get data that is consistent across all departments, whether it be light bulbs, fuel, all 101 different reasons. This this particular public sector organisation, Fire and Rescue, is the only one that can put a pitch in for reducing the CO2 from fires. So some of the data, because I did some looking around, the Science Direct website, the Journal of Environmental Pollution, California's greenhouse emissions between 2003 and 2020, what the stuff that they saved was offset, was negated by the California wildfires in 2022. In fact, the number of amount of CO2 put into the atmosphere in those wildfires was double all the savings of the previous 17 years. So one there goes belief as to what the 2025 wildfires are going to show. So we get wildfires in South Wales, we get fires in North. So there is a way of capturing that. There is science out there. And I think it's an opportunity to flag a different approach that's maybe a bit more innovative and creative as to how we manage our contribution towards CO2. Because we can switch off as many light bulbs as we want, but we will get nowhere close to the CO2 reduced from a factory fire that doesn't occur or a wildfire that was contained to 10 hectares rather than 50. Thanks.
I think, Bee, from my understanding of that, and as I say, you are a little bit quiet on the mic, but we got you, is is the additional value added because of our unique USP, isn't it really? And that is putting out fires. So how can we capture some of that to kind of demonstrate what we're doing? And I think that that probably brings on the question I had, you know, or maybe an option is that if you look at Brechford, when we look at the work we're doing with the university around post grad or somebody that's looking to get into that world through Cardiff, I wonder if there's an opportunity of an asset there that can actually pick up some of that data work. But I actually could bring somebody in, really. It might be a good placement for somebody in Cardiff or whatever.
It would be absolutely ideal, Carl. And we had a placement. We ran a partnership graduate programme with Havert. And that ended last year. It was run through Welsh Government. So we shared a master's graduate for two days a week. And since that has discontinued, we've really felt the absence of that that resource, not not only because of the expertise or because of the extra pair of hands, because there's an awful lot to do, you know. So it is, that is one of the strands we'd be looking at to try and sort of bolster this area as well as, you know, all Wales provision of services. I think we're not too different to be across all Wales. And a lot of our strategies could be aligned. So I think there's opportunities there as well across. Because, you know, sustainability at this moment in time is a very niche area. And the market for these kinds of experts are, you know, they can move around and earn lots of money really, really quickly. We are limited in in terms of what our offer is. But I think that could be expanded if, like you said, it was an all Wales offer.
Fabulous. Thank you, Lisa. Any appreciate we discussed at the pre-meeting. Appreciate we've got a more the forward forward facing paper coming into March. I think there's definitely an option for supporting you in the short term around that, if there is anything around that university. And then looking at that capturing of a broad border data piece that we're going to look through with Beth and. Any other questions at all? Or colleagues happy to sign off the paper?
No, just to say it's very good ideas what we've heard. And, you know, we, as Beech said, we've got the USP in this and we could contribute significantly.
Fabulous. Thank you all. That's great. And Lisa, thank you for that. I'm really excited with Beth and the paper because we're on what the future is. And it's not going to go away. Welsh Government are very, and their passion, their energy in this area, which is good to to support.
For things.
Absolutely. Says the man with the electric car plugged in outside. Right. Okay. Thank you very much. So moving on then for Mike around the next two papers, the Community Fire Safety Update and Business Fire Safety Update.
Okay. Good morning, all. I will go through this fairly quickly because we're governed by time at the moment. The report is for awareness, really. If I go through some of the salient points, what it talks about recruitment, it is looking quite positive at the moment. Lots of interest from a recent vacancy. So I'm quite happy with how we are in that regard. I've talked about activity trackers and what we're doing to monitor the activities that we've got ongoing within community safety. It has led us to develop a new recording system to enable to track all our activities, which we can then update Welsh Government when we need to. We are waiting for a more robust recording system. So we're waiting for CFMIS because at the moment, all our databases are in various locations. So we are looking at one central recording system. I know CFMIS is coming into BFS this week. I'm following that rollout. It will then go to other departments with community safety being one of those. Part of what I'm doing within community safety as well is really looking at our partnership working. So I've got a bit of work ongoing at the moment just to establish what partnerships we currently have. I'm also looking around the country using HMI CFRS and really picking some ideas from some of those reports and then looking at what available partnerships, partnerships there are around the country and then comparing comparing them with ours. So that work is ongoing. I've also got a strategic plan which has been drawn up for the department. It is very much in draft, but it should be going live imminently. I will be going out around the country as well. So I'm probably going to hold off with that strategic plan for a short period of time until I can get more of an overview with what's going on around the country. One of the questions within the report is based on is our approach working? Are we industry standard, innovative or behind the curve? If I'm probably honest, I'd probably say, using their terms, we're probably adequate, I would say. But my aim is to make us outstanding. And we will achieve that. It will take a little bit of time. And when we look at innovation, if we look at just today as an example, we're now in UHW University Hospital Wales, we've got a an event, it's almost a question time event. So we've got 300 students waiting for us outside. It's a panel question time. It is the first of its kind. So we are trying to prove a concept which, if it works, hopefully it will be showcased around the country. So if we're looking at innovation, we are, we are working towards that. If we look at resilience, so going on to 1.3 resilience within the team, this is an area which we need to develop. I've got various teams, home fire safety, arson reduction, et cetera. There's got to be more of a crossover. So build in resilience if one team is able to do the other team's work. So that work is ongoing at the moment, but I should be able to update where we are in future meetings. Again, I'm just skipping. Fire investigation, yes, it does feed into what we do. It's something which we need to factor in most, our use of data. So it doesn't necessarily mean we need an intelligence system, but we need a proper database which we use incident data, we use fire investigation data, and we use other data which is looking at high risk premises, over 65 individuals living alone. So it's how we use data. We can do that more efficiently and effectively. So it's something which we need to do. And it's something we are looking at and I will feedback in time. Recently, so if we look at the incident on the weekend, Abtilary, really unfortunate. But from that event, from that incident, as well as looking after our crews, what we've implemented is a new response group. So we have a process, which is an M37 process whereby we look at the events. Do we know about these individuals? So where are there any interaction? What what agencies have interacted? But I think the M37, we still need to do that legislation. But we've got a new response group. So the new response group will be initiated 72 hours or before, where we bring in key individuals and we look at what we can do immediately after that event. So it may be that we reassure the public. We look after the welfare, the crews. It may be that we look at what interventions we had. So it's all our work which we've now implemented and that is that is up and running. I'll again, I'll update in the in the future with that. So that really brings me to the end. I don't want to go on too much because I know I've got another two papers. But if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, right. Thanks. Let's pause there then. And I'll bring you for questions. Beech, first of all?
Well, first of all, Mike, thanks very much. I think first of all, your candour when it comes to looking at, you know, because the paper itself asks three questions. Where are you? Are you innovative? And really appreciate, you know, it's not easy for people to come forward and say, actually, we're okay, we're sort of. So I think that's, that's great that you've done that. And you did that in a previous meeting. So that's really appreciated. I think a number of the points, you know, we discussed when I was chatting with you yesterday. And I know a lot of this stuff is now work in progress. I think one of the things that we is in the structure of the paper, because when I read it, the first part, because the paper is about the Community Fire Safety Update, and then we talk about current and future risks. And then that tends to concentrate on HR issues and recording things as opposed to the risks that are in community safety, which would then come out from the CRP. I get that. But it would be looking at what are the what are the at-risk groups? What are the mitigations? What are the resources required and blah, blah, blah? That's how I would see the current and future risks and the projection of where demography, climate change might take those risks. I think that's, I understand that that's work in progress. And you've got visits to Merseyside and Humberside, which I think is really, really important. I think also the fact that you say you're after University Hospital Wales, I think that's really good. Because when we discussed yesterday, how many, how many parallel engagements with partner agencies are we doing across the piece? How many, you know, do we have anybody co-located in for half a day a week with the police or social services or housing or whatever? And I think that co-location changes. And I think that co-location changes perceptions and understandings how other organisations are working. And equally, how those people coming in to work with us and see how we operate, and then you can tie it up. It's very difficult to get partnership working done over a phone call. Partnership working is often a thing about face-to-face and relationships, and I think that's an area where we could make a lot, a lot of progress. Without waiting for funding for joint working, I think we should be using our organisational capital. I don't mean that in the finance sense, I mean, you know, the goodwill and the understanding we've got to project ourselves. Because if we don't look at the last number of fatalities, one of the unfortunate common themes is they weren't on our radar. But they're on our partner agency's radar, so if we worked together, we would jointly, sort of multi-agency working, pick these people up on the radars, and I think that's something we need to think about as we, as we go forward. And I'll save the other comments for the next paper, but I know you're, you're working hard and with other colleagues to try and update this, and I know that the next paper that comes will be a lot different to this one, so thanks.
Thank you, Vij. Mike, if you wait a moment, I'll bring in Lady Wilcox and then hopefully you can take all the points in one go, if you can remember them.
Yeah, thanks very much for this, Mike. It makes very interesting reading and it's a very honest, straightforward account, which I think is always the best way to deal with anything. And an old headmaster said to me once, the biggest room in the world is the room for improvement. In fact, he used to wear it on a T-shirt, which was incredibly annoying a lot of the time. Sorry, that's the bell ringing, it rings here, you know, for whom the bell tolls. So yeah, so the point I was going to make, you know, Vij has mentioned it about partnership working, which is brilliant. And, you know, I don't know if you could allocate half a day a week, but, but if you use our 10 constituent local authorities who have got tons of data and stuff on this, you know, if we could work in partnership with, if you did, you know, one, one week, one another, you know, you went round the 10 in a, in a two-month cycle. They'd appreciate it and that's also a renewed way of working. Because they do a lot of partnership working now with the partnership boards that are in place across all the authorities, you know. You know, it's there for the taking and for the making, so please use those opportunities and let's make the most of it. And let's demonstrate to our partners across the piece that, you know, we mean business about this because if we can prevent, you know, that's so much better than having to, to put that fire out, excuse the pun, but you know what I mean.
Thank you, Lady Wilcox, that's really helpful. Mike, I've got a couple of points, but do you want to come back on, on those two, on both Vij and Lady Wilcox?
Yeah, just to reassure, we are getting out in the communities, we are linking in with the police. Primarily, primarily it's the role of the arson reduction team, so they're making, they're forging those partnerships. But we got, we got various partnerships, all I'm doing is trying to expand them a little bit further. So I'm looking at domiciliary care, dementia, age concerns, there's so many groups out there. I think the hardest bit is trying to find those links, generate and create them. I just think that's the difficult part for me and for the team, but I have a dedicated project manager who's now tasked with this work. So hopefully we'll start to make inroads in those partnerships.
But every council social services department would have all those links already, Mike, they'd have named people, you know. Don't, 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 don't have to, you know, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, do you know what I mean? The, the people, the organisations, they're all there in every single council.
Yeah, okay, I'll, we'll look into that. G D P R, some of those plays are a difficult part which I've experienced recently. They're quite reluctant to release some of the data, but if I can get any way that I can get that data, obviously I will.
You're saving lives, Mike, you know, you can't be clearer with than that. And if we need to have, if we need to discuss this with the leaders of the councils, then, you know, so this is another way of governance, okay? This is the other side of governance. It's not always about us looking down and, you know, in a kind of top-down stuff, it's about bottom-up as well. So any barriers that you come across, you know, we can perhaps find another way to deal with it, dealing directly with the organ grinder and not the monkey, yeah?
Mike, I think you've heard there's lots to fall there for you. I think you're the areas of our tears, but you know, when you look at the recent, we were talking about this morning, you look at the recent fatal deaths we've had here, they've all been a specific demographic, age profile, vulnerability element, haven't they really? So I think we've got a really good idea of if you work better with us, we can stop some really vulnerable people dying. So I think absolutely goes on to Lady Wilcox's point. I also think this is an area, Mike, that we actually had funding cooked by Welsh Government, didn't we? Some of the functions within there. So we are doing this because it's the right thing to do. And I think that, that conversation back with Welsh Government that we can have as commissioners will again will support that going forward. Because, you know, that, that, that was a big impact and I know policing was not happy that some of the functions were cut because we've unfortunately managed to maintain it really. And again, as others said, look forward to the next paper. Vij, sorry, I'll bring you in finally.
Yeah, just quickly, I think when it came to the smoke alarms, we had an amount of funding from Welsh Government. I mean, we then fitted the amount of smoke alarms that the Welsh Government funded for us. And the Welsh Government will have given us what they thought would be enough to keep us, I don't know, keep us quiet, be satisfied well. Whereas if we had a proper assessment of our risks, the communities that were most at risk, and we said, actually, there are, I don't know, ballpark figures, 10,000 people at the highest level of risk that we've got, which means that there are, say, 7,000 properties and we've only got smoke alarms for 3,000, that's the business case for saying to Welsh Government, we have now got a gap of 4,000 and we have an evidence base that supports this level of risk is going unmitigated. And therefore we can then push for additional funding, but at the moment, we're accepting what we've been given and we need a, we need a rationale to be able to evidence-based argue the other way. Thanks.
Thank you, Vij. And Mike, are you okay? You're picking that up again, get links for the CR and P and other elements, don't they, as well going forward? Okay, Mike, got the logs. Right, moving on to your next paper then.
Okay, so protection. Again, I'll just go through some of the, the points. C F M S coming into the service this week, coming into B F S. I think it landed yesterday, so obviously we've got to go through the training now with our system. But what it will give us is something which has probably been lacking for a little while. So what we need is to identify these premises, so being able to input data. So a lot of these papers are in relation to data, how we handle data, how we use data. It's not necessarily that we need an artificial intelligence system, we just need a system which highlights some flags what our highest risks are based on the inputs into the system, so where they got clad in, et cetera. Do they have life? You know, is it residential or not? So that system will make a big difference to us. Moving down, with any business fire safety department probably around the country, part of the difficulty is making sure you've got enough competent auditors within the team, I think. People tend to be, or tend to come into a department and they've got a life cycle within that department, maybe three, four, five years. And it's just making sure that, that we identify those people who are next in line to come into the department, that we train them so they go into the roles. And part of the paper, as you go down, mentions a fire engineer. We don't have any in our service at the moment, so we need to prioritise that aspect. Whether it is internally, where we've got a development pathway from a level four to a level five to a level six. It is significant costs, but I think the, the benefits outweigh the cost. Or we bring someone in external, which is part of our green book strategy. So at the moment, we're all uniform members of staff, we need to diversify our workforce and diversify that, that department. So we need green book staff, and whether we incorporate a fire engineer into that is probably really, really useful at this moment in time, because we are currently using Welsh Government when we need that service, which isn't ideal. So when we look at dated, et cetera, so a risk-based inspection programme, so we're using high risk. We need to identify high risk, whether it's care home, high-rise buildings, et cetera. But again, the system will help us identify that and order and prioritise those buildings. And we need to have one eye on, as well as we've got high-rise buildings, we need to have one eye on the mid, medium-rise buildings as well. So I know that's topical, especially in Welsh Government at the moment. And we are working with them to identify those medium-rise buildings and factor those into our inspection programme. Again, if we go to the question 1.2, industry standard innovation, innovative or behind the curve? Again, I'm going to put us at the adequate. Again, I think the C F M S and some of the changes which we will make in the future, very near future, will start to push us towards the good to outstanding, which is where we need to be. So I think again, that's, that's the direction we're going in. If I just move through, again, with the department, we've made loads of change since I've been in, which was March. We've now got a strategic plan, links to the overarching strategic plan for the service. We've got a risk-based inspection programme which we will improve further, using an electronic format. And we've also produced the look back, so on annual summaries out there, it's glossy magazine which is around the service, which showcases what we're doing every single year, which we're going to replicate in C S as well. So their version is coming out now, so both departments have got a strategy for the next three years with also a look back. So every year we can then look at if we've achieved what we said we're going to achieve it within that 12-month period. So again, if I, only because time is short and I whizz through and I, I acknowledge I whizz through that. But if there are any questions, I can expand at any points you feel I need to expand on.
Thank you, Mike. I'll bring in people questions, but I'll, I'll jump in first of all before Vij gets saddled up on this one. I suppose it's, and it's around the people piece really, which jumped out to me, and I, and I say that in two contexts. One, that engineer piece, but also the kind of right people, right skills, longevity piece. It feels like to me an opportunity here, both certainly around the engineer and the people. If we get the right people in there, that actually we could kind of build best practice across Wales and sell the skills across Wales on top of us. How do we support you to kind of move that department forward around modernisation of the post and getting the right people in there? Because it just feels, not having engineer in Wales across the three brigades just feels for me, you know, and I've got an expert, I, it means just a huge issue, Mike. And I'll let Vij come in, I don't know if he's got something else, Vij, or do you want to come on the back of that?
Yeah, I'll come in the back of that. I mean, I think the, the engineer piece is quite worrying. Downtown Cardiff, Newport and all the development that's going there, we're going to struggle to have, be able to push back against some of these innovative architects who are coming up with some incredible looking buildings, which I think is also good. But we need to be in a position to have our own that can challenge them. I think the, the approach here that we're, because it does say in the report, they said, one of the reasons we haven't gone for it is because we're worried about them leaving. Well, it depends at what stage they're in their career. I mean, we've probably got fire engineers that are graduating from university aged 21 right now, who could actually come in, as you say, on green book. And I think that's a, that's a separate option as opposed to waiting for someone to join fire safety and work their way up and maybe go into fire engineering. So I think there are definite ways we can and should look at it because we're, we're supposed to be in the start of a real building boom. Listen to the government, so I think we need to be prepared to have that capability to respond back to it. And I think there's a, some of the comments, I think, replicated from the earlier papers, so I don't want to really go over those. And if I was pushing you, because you appear good at taking feedback, when you say that is our approach working, you say we're adequate. You said in the paragraph 121, so our current approach is effective, and then next sentence said whilst our current methods rely on manual inputs which are time-consuming and prone to human error, that doesn't sound effective to me. So I think, I think there's a, there's a lot of work to be done and the, and the C F M S thing is really important because the current set that we've got are seeing series of spreadsheets and tables. They're not, they're interrogatable in the easy way, they're not available to stations, they're not shared with, you know. I think there's an awful lot we can do and C F M S, I think, is really important. And I did reference to when I spoke to you yesterday, that Humberside, they do have machine learning, they do have an artificial intelligence policy. And I think there is, I was listening to one of the founders of Google today on Radio 4, and they're talking about the role of A I. If properly used and steered, and I think we shouldn't be wary of it, I think we should embrace it and try and get the positives out of it and use it, use it as an opportunity for good, because there's, there's a role that A I can play and it can save us time having to go through some of these complex calculations and algorithms. And I think we just, it's another example of using technology, but I know you're on top of this and the next paper, as you said before, will be a long way further than this. So thanks for all the effort, just a couple of basic points, which, you know, Carla's elaborated on as well. Thanks.
Mike, if you hold that, I'll bring Lady Wilcox in and then if you could wrap on the back of all of that, we really have them.
Thanks, Mike. I think that, you know, a line from your document that says, "The focus on innovation, regulatory compliance and long-term sustainability is absolutely spot on." So, you know, this paper feels as we're where we should be. Can you excuse my ignorance if I ask a fire engineer, just like to know, just to, you know, not massive detail, but contextually, what does that mean? Because I, I'm sorry, I don't know.
It's just someone who's got qualifications over and above, so currently our auditors are level four. They can then go to level five and level six, they can provide more advice and guidance, especially where legislation is concerned.
Sounds good.
It would also be a graduate, wouldn't it? Because there's no degrees in fire engineering concerning British universities. That if you get a degree in fire engineering, then that allows you to be accredited as a fire engineer.
Right, okay, good. Lovely to learn something new every day. Thank you.
So Mike, I don't know if you've got all those bits and just your thoughts, so there's the, how do we modernise, support you around getting the right people to the team, thoughts on the fire engineer piece? And then the technology piece, I think, with the three kind of actuals.
Okay, for me, I think within the team, they're going about it the right way. So it's almost structured that you have three auditing teams and you've got a training team. So it's almost a training arm within the department, so they are trying to develop people from day one all the way through to their level four qualification. Some of the issues that we're experiencing is, is probably around promotion. So our promotion is based on whoever comes first will have the first vacancy, second, third, fourth and fifth. So what we've got to be mindful of is the services that trying to maintain those people within that department. Because they could, through the process, be allocated a role outside of that department, which then means that we're bringing someone in from outside who isn't qualified, so we then have to start that journey, which can take a couple of years or more to get them qualified, and we've lost people with those qualifications. So it's something we need to, as a service, consider within our promotional process and how we can do it, that we can maintain people with the right skill sets within the right departments. And that applies for other departments such as training, as well as our own in B F S.
Yeah, no, I think, I think you're absolutely right and you see lots of specialist functions, don't you? We're relatively small, so people get promoted out, rather than how do you develop the skill set for a very specialist area role? So definitely something that needs to be thought of really around that one. And the fire engineer thoughts, Mike?
It's probably longer.
Or do you want to take that away and bring that back to us around your thinking going forward?
I will, I'll take that away and I'll, I'll feedback.
Okay, and, and I think what we're saying is we're really open to kind of looking about how do we support you to do something fairly creative, financially supportive, et cetera. Thanks, Mike. Anything else I've missed? Vij, thanks very much. Right, and I think Matt, it's over to you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, George. Good morning, Commissioners, and all. So I'll be brief with this paper for yourselves as well regarding the on-call duty system. And obviously there are two appendices attached to the document as well, sitting on the improvement objectives and the diversity of the on-call team. So I'll go over the key areas of the document. I think one thing that we're very aware of is our on-call is a very challenging system, it's not a local problem, it's a national problem. And what we're trying to do in South Wales is obviously be dynamic and unique in how we're addressing this. Because we have a unique system in South Wales where we pay a salary to our on-call staff and this is something that's not replicated across the rest of the UK as part of that. But obviously it brings its benefits and it brings its challenges. So the purpose of this, obviously, for us is to look at a flexible, agile system for our on-call that is future-fit as part of it. So as you see from there, with, with data that exists within the appendix, the diversity of our on-call exists with a drastic difference, which is pretty much accepted across the UK Fire Rescue Service, which is obviously, we're looking at our on-call with around 576 males balanced against 47 females. Which is obviously, we're looking at our on call with around 576 males balanced against 47 females as part of that. So that's something that I'm keen to address as how our contracts look to be more family friendly, et cetera, going forward. So there are a number of improvements within the paper and the key things that'll draw your attention to, Chair, is obviously as we go through now. Is probably looking at right now is improvement objective for around the alternative career models for on call. So this project is underway now. So we are looking at these alternative career models. And they exist from very different where we may be looking at where a station will give on the evening cover. If that's based on some of the information that A C O Hardfield will come out from his CRMP with regards to the risk within that area. So it may be dynamic to the risk as opposed to what we're traditionally used to within there. The other thing we're looking at as well. Is the requirement not to live in the area and starting to tap into now what is a growing workforce of individuals working from home. To start to open up our facilities where people can work from our fire stations and obviously use them as working locations. So that's one of the key things that we're looking at. But at the same time then, giving on call cover to that station as part of it. Another area we're looking at as well is obviously where individuals can have two contracts. So for example, um if I was the on call firefighter in Portdeclene, but I may work in Remy. So I may be able to, if my employer would release me, I could have a second on call contract there as well. That has to be managed through time, obviously the individual's wellbeing, but that's something as well that we're exploring as part of that as well, which ties into it. Obviously then on to improvement objective six around station turning times the impact of the of the 3020. We've got recent data now that's come from our stats department and we're starting to draw out this. Early early indications is roundabout is that turnout time is put in about a minute a mile on the on a turnout. So if an individual is driving, obviously, three mile station, the the thirty to twenty. As we're looking at adding an additional three minutes to their turnout time. But obviously that's assuming there's a complete all twenty mile an hour area. But what is going to tie into that as well is that the rigid the rigidness that we've always applied around a five minute turnout time. So again, that would tie into what A C O Hardfield is doing with the CRMP around where we can flex. With our turnout time based on the next nearest appliance, which again is a national um practice, which is done by a number of other F R Ss as well. And we have taken up that practice within service, extending certain turnout times up to eight minutes in certain areas for catchment as part of that. So that is that data is going to feed into part of it. Um, improving objective seven around us investigating again those career models like I've discussed around that paper now. There'll be a paper coming to yourselves regarding greater use of our day duty staff. So staff that work for the organization in headquarters such as business fire safety, O R M and community safety. And how we can utilize that staff to fill in gaps on our on call stations, but at the same time maintaining their operational competencies as well. But obviously that conversation is being had with myself and Mike because I'm obviously, I'm cognizant of the fact of. The impact that can have on Mike's personnel's workload as well. So it's about that balance that we have as part of it. And one of the other things we're looking at is placing the fire appliance in headquarters. As well for staff that are in headquarters. So we would cover, they would cover those deficiencies if the local stations are off the run. It would be the practice as part of that then. And again, the key big difference we've had, so in June twenty twenty four. Our on call availability was sitting at sixty two percent. I mean, as of this week, our on call availability is eighty two percent. So we've seen significant growth in that with some of the systems we've changed. And one of the key things we've utilized is our establishment of of whole time duty staff. So where we basically, when when we're overriding over, we detach them into on call stations as opposed to rostering them off. And that is in days and night shifts as well. So we're filling in those gaps with our establishment of whole time as well as part of it as well. And there is elements within the report that talks about contracting and payment review. Obviously, this was sit for a period of time because this ties directly in with the thematic review for training. Where we're looking at the role of a firefighter as part of the on call. So there'll be very little action until that paper is published across the board. But what we are looking to do, Chair, is obviously build an outstanding, sustainable on call duty system. That is flexible and meets the needs of communities and the organization. Because our biggest challenge at the moment is the retention of staff. South Wales, we don't have a recruitment issue, we have a retention issue. So so that's the bit for me, is just overcoming that. Obviously, working with Chris regarding the delay now on the dynamic cover tool. But for us, that doesn't delay us in relation to some of the things we're doing. It's just the tool of how we staff our stations, but it's worked well for us as part of it because it gives us a bit more breathing space going forward with that then. So again, that's that's it for me as part of it. You've got the data within there. Um, just some other things we've done really quick as well. That we're trying to look at some family days for our on call stations as well, so they can bring their families on to stations. They can explain to their families or friends what they do. And uh I've started now writing to all employers that release the on call duty staff. As part of their main employment, thanking them for their support to the service. So I've started that rollout of writing those letters to all employees, thanking them was part of it. And one thing we're doing as well is introducing the five, ten and fifteen year award of recognition to our on call staff. So not not letting getting people through your twenty year medal, we will we'll be doing recognition at those at those milestones as part of it. So that's the whistle stop to a chair to apologize if there's any questions. I'm more than happy to capture them then.
Thank you, Matt. Um, questions then, Kirsty? I know it comes through your board anyway.
No, it's no questions from me. As you said, it comes through the board. I just want to say, you know, that's a significant improvement along. On on call availability and I don't think we should just um gloss over that. Uh, because it's a significant improvement. So I just want to, you know, put that on the record really.
Thank you, Kirsty. Lady Wilcox, anything for you?
Uh, no questions really, just comments and observations that I guess this will. You know, if it goes to Kirsty's board, then this will be continued to be kept under review and and looked at and. And and monitored and and see how improvements can continue to be made.
Thank you, Lady Wilcox. Couple of things, mate, absolutely. That is twenty percent uplift. It's been difficult and and that needs to go back to seeing how well done around that because that is really positive. Fairly by, it is a national issue, sat on the national uh uh fire um fire authorities meeting a while ago and it was the issue that brought up there. And some people are in really difficult circumstances around this. So absolutely, it does need to be recognized. I think the kind of starting to move towards recognition thanks to our staff, I think is really important. Um, twenty odd years is a long while, isn't it? And and people, especially, you know, volunteers that are coming out. And they're paid but doing this time and time again, that recognition and bringing the family back into it, feel that pride of the service, I think is really good, Matt. And it goes at the heart of what we're going to do, how we recognize staff more broadly, both from the the operational and operational side. So it's really positive to see that really. But the report was really good and lots of really progress. So yeah, I look forward to see what it looks like for the future. It's going to carry on being a nasty issue because it 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 doesn't matter where you go from volunteering sector, it's a nasty issue, isn't it?
Yes.
Isn't that really good? So yeah, so look forward to the next up, Mike. Thank you, Matt. And Mike, go on.
Okay, this uh. I'll cover this quite quickly. Uh, probably with the A F A, probably the right place to start is regarding the incident yesterday. Uh, the school fire. Uh, so if you look at the school fire and what occurred. That call came from an alarm receiving center. Uh, so the alarm receiving center received or sent a call into the fire service eleven forty seven. So we were notified. We mobilized an appliance at eleven forty nine. Uh, we then started to receive fire calls at eleven fifty eight. But what I really want to highlight is the fact that we. Through a change request incorporated responding to schools. I think it is such a positive uh action that that we took, because it wasn't originally in there. I'm putting that in there. We've received so much praise from the media. I just wonder how it would have looked if we hadn't uh incorporated schools. So our early intervention saved the majority of that school and that is down to responding from the alarm company. Because again, we were there a couple of minutes after the first call came through. So you can't underestimate how important it is to get crews to that type of incident really early. So. Again, I'm going to skip through most of the uh the paper. I'll take questions after. But if we look at statistics, as of January twenty eighth. There's been a forty two percent decrease in AFAs attended. And that is based on two hundred and thirty one calls from a total of three hundred and ninety six the previous year. So if we incorporate hospitals in that, the hospitals aren't going live until the sixth of or seventh of April. If we included hospitals, twenty eight additional calls, that would take us to a forty nine percent reduction in responding to AFAs. So I think it's a real positive and it's almost exactly as it was predicted. So I'm happy to take questions at that point.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks for that. And I think yesterday is a really good example of sometimes. You've just got to do the right thing on what feels right, wasn't it? And and that change in policy around schools. You know, you know, let's face it, you thought it was the right change and drove it forward as well and supported by others. Just shows sometimes it is about doing the right thing.
Yeah, but for me, Carl, this is, yesterday was really clear for us. That was really sad decision making on the schools. Because you lose a score from the community, especially on where this one was. That's a huge impact. Uh, and the ripple effect, both financially and the impact on families is huge. So I think it was right for us to keep that in and and to maintain that position as well.
Yeah, thank you, Kirsty. Right, questions or thoughts then? Uh, Lady Wilcox?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Um, yeah, um, and reiterating again, well done on yesterday. It was absolutely superb. And and well done to Kirsty for actually pushing us in this direction about schools to begin with. I remember the conversation when she was quite vehement about that. And again, you know. Look how prurient that was. So so fantastic. Um, and and thank you for keeping us informed. You know, I'm a hundred and sixty, seventy miles away and to know that that's happening. I really do appreciate the updates from officers. Thank you very, very much for that. And thanks to the officers for dealing with what could have been a disastrous situation. God, God knows. Just on a on a on a light lighter note, um I read the reports online and ITV were falling over themselves, ITV Wales to be nice to us. So thank you for that. But I don't think that the leader of Vailagl Morgan will um will be happy when. The leadership of the council was attributed actually to the chief executive. Um, so you know, I I I wouldn't be happy if I was her on that one. But uh, all in all, you know, it was a a great example of this work. And again, Mike, I guess this work is ongoing, you know, looking at how this will happen. And the and the change on April the first when NHS are involved, you know, we. We hold our breath with that one as well, I guess. But um, you know, that planned reduction is the actual reduction. So your data is good. So well done.
Thank you, Lady Wilcox. And I've got a question back to both Kirsty and Mike then. Obviously, we've had the regular updates coming through. We've got the change that will occur in April. Um, I suppose there is a cycle, isn't it, that we're going to have to, this has become B A U? Or reporting through uh the relevant boards. Possibly doesn't feel quite there yet with the NHS change. But I would say potentially sometime after that it should do, but I'll kind of be guided by uh by yourselves.
I think I think both Mike and I would agree that we need to get the NHS change over the line. And then it is business as usual. I think the interesting thing to monitor then on a semi regular basis is the maintenance of that level. At the drop, uh, there's been some suggestion by Welsh Government that that initial drop will fall away. Uh, as people apply for exemptions. So I think going forward, it's just to keep an eye on those figures. Uh, and to just keep an eye on the exemption policy and how many requests are coming in and making sure that the exemption policy is robust. Uh, there will be exemptions given, absolutely, but just making sure that that doesn't, that 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 policy is a robust policy. And the exemptions are only given because there is a sound uh sound reason for doing so. But um, yeah, we're almost there. So I think we'll keep it on a little while longer. I think we're in agreement, but um massive progress and um. Very, very, very glad uh to have got to this point. Carl, I just wonder, um, if we can just get some clarification from Gabby. Our hosts here at the medical school are quite anxious for all us for us to go into the event. I'm just wondering whether it's corit if I leave because. And we've already lost one commissioner. I'm just double checking whether I need to stay or whether we 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 would be given permission to leave now.
And I need two commissioners. So so long as Lady Wilcox can stay on, then you are fine to go.
So Kirsty, I think I think I've got notes from from Lady Wilcox, I think, unless they're kind of bing bong with the chest of run. And at which point we can just pause the meeting at that point. Uh, and Kirsty, clearly it's my poor chairing that I've got us through on time. But can I just say, yes, on the last item, Mike, we'll bring keep carry on as we've said. And then if you can agree with Gabby, the reporting to come back in, which I would suggest probably six monthly. Once we are into B A U, so we kind of look at the the figures and how it's going.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mike, thank you for an old team for the work on it. It's been very, very good. And I will let you go to your Q and A panel. Fabulous. Thank you. Right, moving on then. Wayne?
Yep, uh, thank you very much. Um, I think this is the the last the last paper.
Yes.
And it's the it's the report on the statutory consultation regards to the organizational, our organization of annual improvement objectives for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. And again, the report talks about, obviously, this is a statutory consultation we have under the local government's measure. Uh, we should brought the annual improvement plan to yourselves in October. And in that, we talked about planning for first of April for twenty five, twenty six. And as part of that, we undertaken annual twelve week consultation around what our plans are and what we intend to do going forward. So the the consultation was was launched on, it it launches as the plan is launched, so it'll be for twelve weeks. And the service put together a a consultation plan. So we promoted the concert, the the plan widely on social media. Uh, there was a teaser launch video that went with it. We distributed to our state called the register, which we're obviously, we're always intending to grow that. It's got about four hundred. Uh, people have opted in in terms of wanting to know what our plans are, wanting to consult. So good audience there. And we programmed some in person feedback sessions and they were the they were the key for us, according to some of our stations. Going to a job fire controller and talking to, I think we delivered to a cadet evening, which is which is which is something we've done for the first time. Uh, you'll see an appendix one. Uh, we had sixty five people responded correctly, uh, to the uh to the online questionnaire. Again, the questionnaire is a relatively open questionnaire as well. We talk about probably the themes we're looking at working out and probably what we're looking at improvement, what it's doing year on year. Uh, we obviously ask some open questions and we try and give people enough of enough opportunity to give open, open ended feedback and then really what's important to them. Uh, and like I said, we took those nine nine additional face to face consultations for um, which which yielded about eighty people. Obviously, they wouldn't have filled in the the online, the online version. It's important to note that the the number of responses we got was was lower than last year to the online consultation, which is disappointing. But I think obviously those those face to face uh engagements we did do probably will have accounted for some of those reductions. We've had ongoing feedback that people value those face to face engagements. I think in independent culture review. They talked about how they like those P O visits and how they like direct, direct engagement as opposed to the online. So we think a lot of our staff actually may have been getting a lot more engagement, may have engaged more with those face to face actually. And we wouldn't want to double counted them. So we're not promoting that they filled in the online feedback. Uh, additionally as well, obviously, I know our our new chief would have joined us in November. Uh, and I know he's made it a big part of his onboarding to go and visit people face to face. And I think a lot of his comms where he takes direct feedback on board and then delivers direct feedback to individuals. And he's opened up his inbox as well to concerns and queries to be raised. I think that, I think a lot of people are getting what they want and feedback they need by other mechanisms. So maybe they're not using the the large formal consultation to do that, which again, I'm I'm speculating. Some of the key areas that we got, that we did receive in return, uh, the the things, we we did receive some public testimonials. About how great work our crews are doing. Um, again, people, people obviously champion the people, uh, the prevention protection response work. And also people who have praised their colleagues, actually praised some of their colleagues and visited them getting through through difficult challenges again, which was great to read. Uh, and obviously, what what's all we've done in the report as well, um, we had broad agreement for all our themes. Uh, we did again, which is which is quite common, people, people tended to be quite happy with what we've we've planned on doing. Yeah, we went to a lot of detail in in the October plan. So we received broad agreement to our future plans. Uh, what we did do then, we we broke down obviously who's been responding and broadly what they've been saying. Uh, but there was some really key areas of feedback that will be put in. We talked about comments and obviously people making suggestions as well, which is which is something I was really keen keen to listen to. So again, the feedback themes, uh, the team have put together. So again, the feedback themes, uh, the theme of put together, people, culture and working conditions. They were around communication and engagement. They were around technology and equipment and property. Uh, they were on training, uh, effective working, responsible operations, conventions, partnerships, environmental sustainability, et cetera. So I think what was reassuring as well as the feedback really did align with what the future plans are. People were, the concerns people were raising are things that were very confident we will address as part of the transformational change programme, the independent culture recommendations and the thematic group recommendations. Um, and like I said, some of the, some of the feedback we did get in terms of suggestions as well, they do align with some of the work we're already working on, which was, which is again, really reassuring. Again, while the response, uh, numbers were, were hugely positive, what people were saying, even if it was constructive feedback, it, it did align with a lot of the things we're already talking about around these tables, which again was, was reassuring. I think it's, um, it's trying to show that we are weaving that into our planet, the fact that actually some of the things that are coming will align nicely to that. So I think in terms of, in terms of next steps, the feedback was taken into the senior leadership team last week on the sixth of February, where we talked about planning, talked about a way of reflecting what was in the feedback within the plan, uh, the next plan. Because again, there's a strategic, uh, our new strategy is going to be launched. Um, the paper will be with you on the twenty-seventh of February in, in preparation for the pre-meeting. Uh, and again, the next statutory stage of our reporting is the, the, the new strategy that will need to be, will be signed off, will be signed off by ourselves in the March Board of Commissioners meeting. So we have some opportunity to put a lot of that back to you. Uh, a section in that plan is how we've arrived at our plan and we do address the consultation feedback in there. So hopefully with the public and our staff will read is the fact that, you know, almost like you said, we've done how the things you've said reflected in our plans, which is, so it really does give us an opportunity to, to show that consultation does shape how we plan and what we do. Um, and I think in terms of, yeah, as I said, moving that forward, then it is a case of, uh, launching that strategy. So I think the strategy is being devised now. I think the deadline for first draft is next week for pre, for pre-meeting. Uh, and again, hopefully we'll show you more in there about how we've managed to address most of this feedback in the plan. So that's a whistle stop of what we've done there. Um, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Wayne. I've got two questions for you, but I'll see if Lady Wilcox has got any personal.
No, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with that. Um, I might say something after you've said something, Carl, but no questions at the moment. Thanks.
So the question is, which is an overlap really between ten thousand volts and the feedback that we've got there. And I, and I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I know the answer. Obviously, there's lots of crossovers, isn't it, around the key themes? Probably more detail in ten thousand volts because of the way it is. There was lots of the key themes. Presume we're kind of pulling that together. So we're, we're clear around where, where you want it.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think there's a, there's a couple of pieces to, to separate out. There's our public consultation on the plan, um, that is, we can significantly improve on those numbers are low, I think it's fair to say. And last year we sat in this meeting and said that they were low and they're lower this year. Um, we took that away. So the PPR team, the comms team have gone and looked at how other fire rescue services do that so that they can get better community engagement. I think that the solely online approach obviously could be greatly improved. But our internal engagement has probably improved. So we've done quite a lot, things like the ten K volts, the chief's visit. We've done the core code of ethics piece of work that fed our vision, mission and values. And that whole piece is fed in to this as well. So there's a whole host of, um, engagement that we've done in the service. The chief's developing his strategy that will be with you Friday, uh, for a view, which is an overarching piece. We've done some workshops as SLT to discuss that and how that merges into our strategic plan. And the team have gone away and considered how we will overlay things for HMI CFS recommendations, the improvement plan and how all those things, um, mirror together. So they should all be reflected in the strategic plan and our improvements. And we're looking to lay those out in a way that we can manage them systematically. So for example, your venture protection response strategies would align on the areas that we need to improve for HMI CFS. A whole host of additional work and improvement projects while feeding through the government structure. Considered reflecting in the round, I would say, to probably strengthen our internal engagement. And we'll have some work to do on our external consultation, but Reans picking that up ahead of communication engagement is picking that up. Our improvement plan for, um, the coming months.
And that was my second question actually, really. So you looked at the numbers externally and the cost actually of doing what we're doing. It's a legal requirement, but it's not given as bang for buck, is it? And actually, it's not adding the value we want from that, you know, thousands of people that live in across Wales to kind of say, are we in the right place? You know, it's, it just doesn't feel.
Yeah, you're right. And there's, and there's kind of a long game here. So we discussed with the team. Um, our next stage is to go out with our crews and our teams and talk about our vision, our mission, our values, how they work for them and how they deliver their services to the public. And as we bring them along, that journey of understanding that and empowering to do it, we'll be able to then take those crews and, and staff to consult with the community on that as we do it. So we had almost a wholly online approach for our external communities. We will be, if you will, bring our staff along with us and then we'll be able to use our crews to engage with staff around what we want to screen crews on through our, through our protection activity and our partners and those kinds of things.
And potentially include open days and stuff like that, isn't it, Colin?
Absolutely.
And that whole piece, uh.
Yeah, the PPR team identified some best practices from some other services that use precisely those approaches that we'll look to, to pick up next year.
Fabulous. No, I think that's really important to be really interested in. Uh, Lady Wilcox, anything else on the back of those two issues?
No, I think that's covered it. That's great. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Right, Wayne. Thanks for much of the work though. And, you know, there's no criticism, you're staying because we're really hard. But actually, that's where it's a shame because it doesn't value all that work that's been done, doesn't it really? We want to make sure that it does really going forward. So yeah, the more support we can bring to it, the better on that one. Right, I think we've got one more discussion area, which is how do we put a pint in a half pint pot, as my man would used to say, uh, of the, uh, March work plan.
Yes. So the March Forward Work Plan is extremely busy. Um.
But tell me you've got a cunning plan.
I, I do and I don't. Partly, um, there's a, there's some statutory papers which need to come to you for sign-off. And there's a lot of papers then that we need approval for ready for the beginning of the financial year next week, yeah. So sort of the ones about the calendars for meetings, things like that, that we need approval for. So there's then a number of papers that are coming on more urgent work streams. Um, so you've got, um, a paper on CRMP coming to you and a few others that need approval so that the work can start. And for the meeting itself, we're going to try and split the meeting into two halves. So there'll be a morning meeting and an afternoon meeting. So we're not stuck in here for hours on end discussing this. And then, as I said earlier, there's work underway for the Forward Work Programme for next year, which will come to the March meeting kind of for sign-off in, uh, along with the calendar for meetings. Um, to do that then, we've programmed in all the statutory papers that need to come here. Um, I've done some work and put in, uh, deploymental updates that will come to this meeting and the other committees for you. And then urgent work will be fed in as Antwerp.
Okay, so two thoughts from me then. As soon that we can see what March might look like. Uh, Gabby, I appreciate you working on it because we spoke about it earlier on. That'd be great, the way we're in. And we could, we don't do it at the moment, we could build time slots around those. So, you know, if kind of key people are coming, they know they've got ten minutes or fifteen minutes. Then the jet, Kirsty me, will have to manage that or Lady Wilcox, it may work over by then, can manage that in those times. So we know very clearly, we've got that much to do. That's the business and that's what we're going to cover. I know we don't normally do it, but for that one, if we've got so much, we might have to be that, that brutal around actually how we manage that time bit forward. If colleagues are comfortable with that. There you go, Fox.
Thanks. Um, I don't know if it's for this point or for the next one. Um, but I, I'm concerned about the monitoring officer position and that that is out and out for advert. Um, because, you know, we've got a finite time with Gabby and that really needs to be pushed. I don't know where we are with it, but I'd like an update, please.
Okay, we'll get an update and we can't mention pushing to Gabby because that's, he's not a good thing at the moment. Right, so monitoring officer.
Yeah, so thank you Chair and Lady Wilcox. So we have redrafted the job description with a monitoring officer role, following the conversation we had, um, last week regarding positioning it more, um, around the legal requirements. Um, so we have a JD that is pretty much good to go. Chris and I are catching up after this meeting this afternoon because Chris has also been looking at the structure more generally, just to finalise the JD and get moving with it so that we can get it out as soon as possible.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm going to use chairs prerogative then. Let's have that discussion then tomorrow to nail that.
Brilliant.
I'm not big, but we know how the organisation goes. We could be like another. And apparently Gabby can't wait.
Unfortunately, no. No, the March, um, Board of Commissioners will be my last one here. So depending on, um, where we are with things.
Okay, so if we can bring that discussion to ELT, uh, commission discussion tomorrow, we'll nail it down. Hopefully we can get it out then early part of next week. Is that okay? Is that okay, Lady Wilcox? Fabulous. Right, dead on twelve o'clock, and I mean literally dead on twelve o'clock. Um, and I've got no other A O B. Um, so unless anybody's going to say, oh, by the way, can I just thank everybody for the engagement? Thanks for those that stood the test for the two hours and held on all the way through. Really grateful. A lot of work going on at the moment. Uh, you know, a lot to, to kind of nail going forward. But grateful for all those four papers together and thank you for all the support for today's meeting. Lady Wilcox, I hope you're still safe. Okay, I'll be driving.
See you tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Take care, my mate.
Bye bye.